Good evening, the council meeting of March 19th will come to order. Good evening, would ask that all in attendance turn off or silence your electronic devices, and if you would please stand to honor God and country. Father, we gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal face give us strength to act well in all matters before us. Amen. And we'll now pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda can turn in forms to the city clerk seated to my right, and would ask at this time for Dale and Andrea McClellan of M&amp;B Products to come to the podium. And anyone else you'd wish to join you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm here solo tonight aside from Dale, but I have Judy Whitson, who is with Hillsborough County AgVenture, and Gary Tuttle, who is with the Temple Terrace Masonic Lodge. Incidentally, we also have Alan Denham here with Tico, who is a sponsor of Farm Night Barbecue, so I'd like to recognize him. Alan, you can come on up. Thank you.
And prior to your presentation, Andrea, this evening, we would like to thank all of you, your entire family, your wonderful volunteers, those who have donated and sponsored, everyone you assembled to make this such a wonderful evening. And we have a certificate of appreciation for you this evening, which is presented to M&amp;B Products in appreciation of Dale McClellan and Andrea McClellan's outstanding efforts in organizing and hosting the Fourth Annual Farm Night Barbecue. Proceeds from the event will be used to support the city's youth recreation programs. The event was a success thanks to the phenomenal efforts put forth by Dale and Andrea. Their philanthropic efforts are unsurpassed, and the city is proud that they call Temple Terrace their home. We thank you for all you have done for us. And prior to presenting the certificate, I'll turn the mic over to you, Andrea.
Well, thank you. And you guys, it is not just a one company or one family show. There is absolutely no way that Farm Night Barbecue and Temple Terrace would be successful without these wonderful people behind me, without Corey and John and all of the people at the REC Center who put countless hours towards this as well. So please, I appreciate your recognition and your thanks, but it is not just M&amp;B and it is not just us. There are, everybody really is the reason that this thing happens and is successful, and we've had four great years now. I'm looking forward to year five. I'm hopeful that it'll be just as wonderful, but I do, I would like to invite Corey and John, I think, I think I saw John. They are with the REC Center and really, really helped to make this event so successful. So aside from M&amp;B, from the Masonic Lodge, from the city, from AgVenture, from great sponsors like Tico, your city employees are putting countless hours and just as much heart and effort into making this event successful and bringing our whole community out to the farm to have a wonderful, great night and have fun and also raise funds for our city. So as you guys know, we held the Fourth Annual Farm Night Barbecue this year, and it was not as attended, as well attended as past years. So I think we just need to refresh it maybe next year, and I think Corey and John have some really great new ideas to bring next year, and we're looking forward to that. But this year, we had just about 600 attendees, where you remember our second Farm Night had 1,200 attendees, so we just need to build participation back up in our city. So we'll bring new things to the table and try to draw some interest there. But I would like to present Temple Terrace Leisure Services with the proceeds from the event this year, and Corey and John, if you guys would like to tear off. Oh, and Phil, I'm sorry. I didn't see you come in. I didn't see you guys come in, so rip away, like Christmas, you know. So we were able to raise $8,546.27. So again, thank you to everybody who's involved. We really appreciate it, and I think we even have a date for next year. I think it's February 21st, 2020. Again, it's a Friday night, and we'll start promoting it, getting information out there, and I know you guys all attend, but hopefully we can get the whole city out there. Thank you.
You want to get the check, John?
I see Corey took the real check. Corey, you have the real check in your hand?
So that's why I told them to open that one.
Next, would ask Danny Riordan and any members of Delta Tau Delta who would like to join him, along with Carol Brennan and Dory Rivers from the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation to come forward. This evening, the mayor and city council are delighted to recognize Delta Tau Delta for your leadership in the Temple Terrace community with this certificate of recognition. It is presented to you in recognition of Delta Tau Delta, who established its national philanthropic partnership with Juvenile Diabetes Research in 2012. Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation leads the fight against type 1 diabetes by funding research, advocating for government backing, and expanded access to treatment, and providing a support network for millions of people around the world impacted by type 1 diabetes. JDRF is the world's largest nonprofit founder of type 1 diabetes research. While the focus is on curing type 1 diabetes, JDRF pursues new treatments to keep people with type 1 diabetes healthy until that day comes. Delta Tau Delta is a values-based organization with truth, courage, faith, and power as their core values. The mission, "Committed to Live Lives of Excellence," encourages more than 130 of the fraternity's chapters on college campuses nationwide to work closely with the local JDRF chapters to help raise funds and awareness for type 1 diabetes. Delta Tau Delta fraternity has raised more than $1.4 million for JDRF. Chapters nationwide have contributed over 12,000 hours of service to JDRF. The USF chapter is a leader nationwide in these efforts. The next impact project is in the works with Delta Tau Delta working on the JDRF One Walk scheduled for April of 2019. This evening, we thank Delta Tau Delta for sharing their time, their talents, and their treasures to better the health and quality of life for children in the Temple Terrace area and beyond. President Riordan, Carol, Dory, would you like to say a few words?
I just want to thank you guys for having us here. You know, this is really cool for us, especially because we do like to raise money for such a great organization. You know, a lot of us in our individual lives do have people that have type 1 diabetes, you know, relatives, friends, so being able to raise money for that is just such an awesome experience for us, being able to give our time and our efforts, and it wouldn't be possible without JDRF right by our side, talking to us, trying to figure out more stuff for us to do, and we just thank them from the bottom of our hearts.
Hello, thank you for having us. I'm Dory Rivers. I'm the outreach manager for the local chapter over in St. Pete. I've been the outreach manager for about eight years now, working for the chapter, but I've been involved with JDRF for 17 years when my son was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes at four years old. He's 21 years old now, and he's doing really well, and he's doing great. JDRF has funded research, as you had said, since the time we were formed back in 1970. We've funded over $2 billion worth of research that has gone directly to benefit kids like my son through donations like the Delta Tau's, who we appreciate it so, so much, so appreciative of what they've done for us, and I know firsthand of how that's helped local kids and kids in our community, because that diagnosis can be overwhelming. Type 1 diabetes is an autoimmune disease. There's no cure for it. When the child is diagnosed, they can be diagnosed as young as six months old. It's mostly diagnosed in children, but adults can be diagnosed as well. It can be an overwhelming diagnosis. There's no cure for it. Their own immune system attacks the pancreas and kills off the insulin-producing cells, which makes them insulin-dependent for the rest of their life until we find a cure. So it's really important to continue funding this research through donations like this. And as the outreach manager, it's my job to support the local community and families who have been newly diagnosed. So we have a lot of different outreach programs that we fund with this research to help those families deal with the diagnosis, like a Bag of Hope program, and support groups, and mentoring, and all that kind of thing, in addition to the research, to try and help those families. So thank you, everybody, for having us here, and I'm going to let Carol talk a little bit about our chapter and our upcoming walk.
Thank you again for having us. We appreciate it. I'm Carol Brennan, I'm development manager at the chapter, and I handle our walk programs. So we're super excited to be here tonight because our walk is April 13th. Last Saturday, we were four weeks out. The Deltas are going to be there with a big team. They've been fundraising, raised some great money already with some of their programs they've done on the USF campus. But our chapter alone, we only have five, five full-time staff, one part-time. We raised $2 million last year, so the walk is a big part of that. This year, we're hoping to reach $700,000 at our walk, so we really would love some, any community or corporate support on walk day. It's not too late to get involved. I brought some walk brochures with my card attached to them, and we'd love to see if anybody has a business and like, you know, some sponsorship opportunities, or just to get a group together and come out and support the community and the Deltas. That would be great. We'd love to see you guys. So we appreciate, again, being here tonight. Thank you.
At this time, would invite John West and Miranda Hilton of the chamber to come forward and brief us on the 30th Annual Upcoming Business Expo.
Good evening, I'm John West. Of course, Miranda Hilton here is with me. We're representing the chamber here tonight. I serve on the board of directors of the chamber, and this year, I've taken the position of expo chair, and so we just wanted to make a general announcement and also, of course, thank the city and the council for their continued support of the chamber and the business activities of Temple Terrace. So coming up soon is our 30th Annual Business Expo, which I think is a great milestone, and we also have networking and taste. It will occur on Thursday, March 28th, starting at 3:00 PM and going till about 7:00 PM at the T. Pepin's Hospitality Center at 4121 North 50th Street. Complimentary tickets will be available at the chamber office. Miranda has a few there that she's demonstrating. Right now, we have over 60 area businesses and organizations, including some of the City of Temple Terrace's own departments, who have booked booths, and we have different area restaurants who will be providing taste of some of their food. We'd like to thank our many expo sponsors. Our title sponsor is Republic Bank. We have platinum sponsors Advent Health Tampa, Chick-fil-A Temple Terrace, and T. Pepin's Hospitality Center, and our vendor reception sponsor is the Tampa Electric Company. We have gold sponsors Express Employment Professionals, The Lodge at Lake Crest, Miracle Leaf Tampa, Promise Point at Tampa Oaks, Puff and Stuff Catering, The Rotary Club of Temple Terrace, Suncoast Credit Union, Watts, Dawson &amp; Associates. Silver sponsors Blount and Curry Funeral Homes, Edward Jones Investments, Perry Jacobson, ER 24/7 in Temple Terrace, Hilton Garden Inn in Tampa North, Pamela Lee Photography, and Tobacco Free Florida, the AHEX Association. We'd like to thank all of those sponsors for their support of the chamber and of this event, and we look forward to seeing many members of our community, and hopefully some of you there at our vendor, at our expo. And again, we'd like to thank the council and the city for their continued support of the chamber and business in Temple Terrace.
Thank you. Counsel, there are two vacancies on the municipal code enforcement board to fill the seat of Bill Newkirk, who termed out, and Bill Snelling, whose term has expired. Mr. Snelling is eligible to serve an additional three-year term. The city received three applications from Bill Snelling, Mafie Ahmad, and James Buckley. For those applicants who are in attendance, would any like to address counsel? I see two hands, Mr. Snelling, and then we'll go to Mr. Buckley.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick, quick comments. I just want to say that I've enjoyed the two years I've been serving on the code board. The first year was as an alternate, and then the last year was a full member. It's been a great opportunity for me to learn and become more familiar with the city and what's happening in Temple Terrace, and also get to know the city staff as well. As far as my duties on the code board, it's my number one goal is to be fair and unbiased. Hopefully, the questions that I've asked and the findings that we've come up with reflect that desire. Knowledge of the city code and experience on the board are also important elements. I think, I think I learn something new every, every meeting, and I feel that I'm a much more effective member now than I was two years ago. So I'd like to continue to serve on the code board, and I appreciate your consideration for appointment to the vacancy.
Thank you, Mr. Snelling. Mr. Buckley?
Good evening, Counsel. My name's James Buckley. I've been a resident of Temple Terrace for about two and a half years. I am very excited for this position to be open. I've been waiting for some time. I also echo the gentleman that mentioned caring about fairness. I would also add maybe leniency, something I would, I would look to bring to the, to the board where, where applicable, but also fair. I have five years' experience in public service in the town of Fort Myers Beach and the city of Sanibel. Currently, I work at Citibank. I've spent two of those years in compliance, so I'd really love the opportunity to bring that experience to Temple Terrace and give back to the community that I love and want to see grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Is Mr. Ahmad in attendance this evening? Council members, you have ballots. If you would vote for your top two choices, and as you complete the ballot, if you will pass it down towards the city clerk. Top two choices, yes, sir. We have two openings. The top applicants are Bill Snelling and James Buckley. I would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of James Buckley and Bill Snelling to the municipal code enforcement board for terms extending from March 19, 2019, to February 16, 2022. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor, if you'd signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Next, prior to moving to item 3B, prior to continuing, in compliance with our code ordinance, it is my understanding that there can be no duplicative appointments to both our board of adjustment and our code board. I'd ask the city attorney, Ms. Shashon, to confirm this.
Yes, Mayor. Section 12-72 on, that covers board of adjustment, states that none of the members of said board shall hold any other public office or position in the city. So if they, if someone wants to be on the board of adjustment, they cannot hold another position with the city.
And my apologies to Mr. Buckley that this was not caught during the application process or in review by the city clerk, but I will request that we repost this vacancy since we only had one application for the board of adjustment, and it would be a conflict because of the closeness of these two boards. It's just not permissible. But thank you, Mr. Buckley, for your willingness to serve.
Are there any other boards that this applies to, or is it just the board of adjustment?
It seems that it applies to the board of adjustment. I haven't researched every other board that we have. I don't see it under the code enforcement board.
Because we have people who serve on multiple boards, so I just want to make sure if that's the case, that we look at all the boards.
And I think going forward, our request would be as, as our city clerk vets these that we're very, we're very high and tight on how we review the applications to avoid any embarrassment to our applicants in the future.
Next, Riverwatch Task Force board appointment. There is one vacancy on the Riverwatch Task Force board due to Ron Smith's term expiration. Ron Smith is eligible to serve another term. The city received one application from Ron Smith, and would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Ron Smith as a member of the Riverwatch Task Force for a term extending from March 19, 2019, to February 16, 2022. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign? Thank you, motion carries. If the minutes of the March 5th, 2019, city council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of March 5th, 2019?
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign? Thank you, motion carries. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. As speakers come to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. During public comments on items not on the agenda, the city manager and directors in attendance do make note of those items related to city business to ensure residents that all of your comments are taken seriously and will be followed up on. James? Jacobs? I'm sorry, I got stuck on reading the last name. Sorry, James.
Well, good evening. James Jacobs, Tampa, Florida. I'm here on behalf of Congressman Ross Spano's office this afternoon. Mr. Stevenson and I, along with the congressman last Friday, had a very productive meeting. Just want to make sure you all had a face to go with a name as far as the congressman's local representative. Many of you have had the opportunity to meet before in a past life when I served for CFOs at Water and Patronus, but the congressman was good enough to ask me to come over and couldn't pass up that opportunity to represent him locally. So Mr. Stevenson has all of our contact information, but for me personally, I've got some cards. So that's my contact information, so you'll have a direct contact. I know many of you also know the congressman personally as well, but we wanted to make sure that the lines of communication were open between the board as well as our office as we work together to serve our shared constituents. We appreciate you guys letting us come out and crash the party tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Hadeel Jundee?
Hadeel Jundee, 23, oh, well, Temple Terrace, instead of giving my address. Don't look too excited to see me again. Hopefully, this is the last time we'll talk about this topic, but before I talk about the topic I'm going to, let me start with saying I'm going to address counsel on the fact that they've made board appointments with individuals who have expressed Islamophobic rhetoric speech in the past, amongst other things, and I just ask that city council screen or consider putting guidelines on having zero tolerance for board members who display any type of racism in the future decision-making towards any religion. So I don't enjoy coming and speaking here. I'm always nervous if I don't look it, I am, and I'll try to get to valid points, and some people think we've got bigger fish to fry. It's been almost a month, and citizens haven't mentioned the mayor's PhD and missing masters, and yet our city and mayor still made the paper, unfortunately, under the title "Three Top Losers of the Week," which it shames me to say alongside mayor of Newport Ritchie in recent news. Sitting mayor of Newport Ritchie also is in his own mess. Not sure what's going on with mayors of small cities in Tampa, unfortunately, not because of anything good. So we went to last meetings, we got where we are now. You made your statement. Ms. McMullin came, who with all due respect was irrelevant to speak on your dissertation in her own words. She said that you asked her to determine whether your dissertation followed proper format. McMullin found that it did, saying, and I quote, "It didn't say whether it was outstanding or poor. It said, 'Yes, it exists.'" Basically, what she did was say that it didn't support any claims to your master's degree. It didn't validate, it didn't validate the university. Your cheerleaders seem to think that we have some kind of political agenda, and I'm here to clarify that there is no political agenda. I voted for you. I'm a Democrat. I have nothing against you. I know you've supported Muslims. I know you went to the schools, and I'm all for it. I think this is more about you being a woman and all of us feeling like you're here to let youth look up to you, and I don't think that you have. Some citizens are passionate about what shops are being built, and when people say that we should just let this go, when we've got bigger fish to fry, I think that's really, it's just sad. Our concerns are valid. Some people don't want hookah shops being built, cellphone shops. Some people care that she didn't live in Temple Terrace. She was hired. She wasn't voted in. To me, it doesn't matter. It may move on from here, from city meetings. Like I said, I might not speak at these again, but it won't move on from your reputation. You didn't need this title for this job, but you held on to it and risked it. Everyone has an agenda, mayor. These meetings have agendas. We know it's not the pay, but essentially, you could have with your own hands in the very beginning, let this go. I ask that attorney, that the attorney and city council members look over the Florida State statutes since doctor has been placed on the city's website, and I ask you to do so to protect the city and whoever is in charge of editing this website, because if there are any charges, they are not to be taken lightly, and the city should not be involved, and this is all I ask of you for now. Look up 817-567, and if you look that up, no person in the state may claim either orally or in writing to possess an academic degree as defined or the title with said degree unless the person has been awarded the said degree, and then it continues to go on from there. 817-566, misrepresentation of an association with or academic standing at post-secondary educational institution. Now, I want you to read more into this because this one continues using the PhD, knowing fully well it was shut down. That's all I ask of you, is just take the doctor off. If she wants to represent herself as doctor anywhere else, that is her right, but you as attorney, I think, should look into this so that the city is not involved. If it's her right to do so anywhere else, then by all means. Thank you.
Annette Rennie.
Annette Rennie, 9512, Woodland Ridge Drive. As a citizen, I'm really tired of all this. I appreciate our mayor. I think she's energetic. She's well-educated. I've never seen anybody dedicate herself as much as Mel Giorro. I look at each one of the council members. I may not have voted for all of you, but I know that you have put every effort this year into accomplishing what you've been assigned to. And to me, that's where the city is going, to get redevelopment done. They did the Riverwalk. They did the Recreation Center. You are constantly involved in doing what you're supposed to do. The rest of it doesn't matter. The people who've watched from home, who are friends of mine, and I meet a lot of people in my business, say the same thing. Get over it. Let's move on. We're accomplishing a lot. Each one of you have specialties, each and every one of you, from the club and the REC Center, to accounting, to law, to Mel, who's just about everything, to Mr. Chalura, our councilman Chalura, who is real estate-oriented and very intelligent in business, and Ms. Donahue, and all the clubs and things she's involved in, and then there's Mr., our city manager, who's here day and night. Let's talk about this stuff. Let's keep going forward. Let's talk about this stuff. Let's keep going forward. Stop going backward. We don't want to hear any more of this stuff. We want to move forward and keep accomplishing what we have accomplished. I'm very proud of each and every one of you for what you do, how you do it, and how you stay focused, and you're getting paid next to nothing and have full-time jobs and families. Thank you. Let's move on. Let's stop this nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 8A, a resolution approving 2018-2019 interlocal agreement regarding the distribution of enhanced 911 emergency telephone service fee revenue. Police Chief Ken Albano will explain. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Ken Albano, your police chief. Before you this evening, for your consideration and approval, is the renewal of a long-running interlocal agreement between Hillsborough County and the city of Temple Terrace for the distribution of 911 emergency telephone service revenues. On February 20 of this year, County Board of Commissioners approved the attached interlocal agreement whereby $106,100 of the overall budgeted appropriations for the enhanced 911 emergency telephone service fees may be distributed to the city of Temple Terrace. These funds may only be used by the city for salaries, education and training of 911 call-takers, and other authorized expenses described in the Florida statute 365-172 subsection 10. Subject to council approval and in compliance with the aforementioned Florida statute, $54,000 should be placed into account number 001-1440-521.12-11 to be used for authorized 911 call-taker salaries. The additional $52,100 will be placed into general fund restricted account number and used as permissible for other 911-related costs. It's a recommendation that this city council adopt Resolution 2018-19 interlocal agreement, Hillsborough County and City of Temple Terrace, regarding the distribution of 911 enhanced emergency telephone service revenues. And it's further recommended that this city council approve the intended use as previously described. I will stand for questions.
Thank you, chief. And prior to questions from council, I'd ask if there are any members of the public wishing to address council on this item. Seeing none, council questions? Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, good. This is, this is a great deal. But I do have a question. You may not be able to answer this. I don't remember during the budget cycle how the, were, were these revenues, was this funding, inter, inter, interlocal agreement funding, used in the calculation of revenues? By that, I mean, were we counting on that, or is this found money?
We're always counting on it, but we never know for sure what the county commission is going to approve until they do.
It's annual. At the revenue source. I don't remember.
It's an annual.
Right.
It's a little odd because we get these funds now. Our budget cycle starts in October.
Right. So this will be for next year or for this year?
It is for this year.
It's this year's money. And we will, again, in the 2020 budget, we will take into account that we've received the same $106,100 for the last several years. But to the city manager's point and Councilmember Ross, that can change. We hope it doesn't, and certainly if it did, they were considering it one time, and Plant City got together, and Temple Terrace got together, and we went down, and we, we shared how important these dollars are, and that thought went away. So I'm pretty confident that as long as those monies are coming in, they're going to continue to share those monies with the city.
Thank you. I couldn't remember, and I just want to make sure. I'm just seeing if it was found money or not. I move to adopt the agreement.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion, council? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a resolution approving Kim Lee Horn to develop a comprehensive 20-year wastewater master plan. Troy Tinch, Public Works Utility Director, will explain. Mr. Tinch.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council. Troy Tinch, Public Works Utilities Director. I'm here this evening to seek approval for funding of a wastewater master plan. So you may be asking yourself, what is a wastewater master plan, and why do we need one? Well, wastewater master plan looks at our entire wastewater system holistically. Looks at all of our lift stations, looks at our, the piping, the, the gravity system, the force mains. It makes a determination of a condition index for that system. It also helps us to identify needs within that system. In addition, it's, it helps us to, sorry, lost my train of thought there. Basically, it, it helps us get a better feel for what our system is. And also, this particular wastewater system is going to help us map out and model the system. So one of the things that we want to know is we, we start to grow, we start to annex, we start to add additional properties to the city. As Councilman Ross brought up, do we have the, the fire? Do we have the police? Well, something else we need to look at is, do we have enough sanitary sewer to, to handle these additions? Do we have enough to handle a complete new development of, say, 100 homes? And so the master plan would help answer all those questions for us and really help us develop also our CIP as we move forward to determine what's the condition of our lift stations, what's the condition of our system? How do we want to expand upon that system? And help us fund that in a five-year program. So all these things, again, would be addressed. So I think the, the what is also addresses the why, why we need this. As the Director of Public Works Utilities, one of the things that I need to know is the condition of our assets. And this would help me address that particular question regarding the sanitary sewer system. So that in itself is important. In addition, it also helps me make a determination, what do I need to continue to maintain this system? And also to meet the needs as the city moves forward, as it grows, as it expands, as sanitation's come in. So all those things are, are to be addressed under this wastewater master plan. In addition, I did want to point out that this plan was budgeted. As I sat down with my, my management staff previously, before this budget cycle started, we talked about what do we need, and I asked a simple question, do we know the condition of our system? And the answer was, well, we know the condition of some of it, but not all of it. So we made that determination at that point. We need to move forward with this. We need to know the condition of our system so that we can add, you know, accurately manage that system. So as we move forward, I, I just think that this is something that will help us, help the department, and it will continue to allow us to serve the city as we have in the past. So that said, staff recommends the city council approve the expenditure of $199,212 for services to develop a wastewater master plan. The proposed work will be authorized as a task order under the existing General Professional Services Agreement between the city and Kim Lee Horn. Funding for this effort has been budgeted in the Water and Sewer Renewal Fund with an account number 430-1931-535.63-34. And I believe I got all my GL numbers. It's done. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch. And prior to questions from council, I would ask if there are any citizens who would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, council questions? Councilman Donahue, then we'll go to Councilman Schisler.
How long do you expect this study to take? Will we know this going into our next budget cycle?
The study is, let me see if I can find the schedule real quick here.
I looked at the scope, but I...
Yeah, so, look, 46 weeks, so right out of year. So we'll have some information as we move into our next, next budgetary cycle. As we learn that information, that will, again, help us budget for FY '20. But we won't have the official plan in place until next fiscal cycle.
Thank you. Councilman Schisler.
Good presentation. From the private sector, I have an aversion to studies and... A version to studies and, and master plans, they tend to be ineffective and, subtle changes that can occur afterwards can derail the, the entire plan, depending on what, what occurs. But I do have a couple of questions. I'm in favor of, I have a couple of questions. Who else bid on this, or did we just go with Kim Lee Horn?
Since we use our general services contract, we did not have to competitively bid that. That was all, the general services identified four engineering firms, and we were able to choose between those four. And that, that's the CCNA process that allows that to happen.
So there's nothing, nothing?
There was no, no official bid for that. We, and the reason why we selected, I think, maybe I, I know where you may be headed, is the reason why we selected to go with Kim Lee Horn is, and, and you've, you've heard me mention him on several occasions, the projects that are brought up last time for where the force main replacements kind of dovetail with the actual lift station replacement. So it made sense for us to continue to utilize them for those efforts. I will tell you this, that staff and I are very pleased with the work efforts we've received from Kim Lee Horn. We feel like that they are very responsive. They're always on time, and they're always on budget. And we have not always seen that with some of our other firms as far as, in addition to their eagerness. We've actually had Kim Lee Horn come to us with our CIP, with our budget, and say, hey, we noticed you have money for this, this, and this effort. How can we assist you with that? So their eagerness, their ability to work with staff, they really are a good fit for us right now, and we're very happy to continue to work with them.
Well, confidence by staff is, it'll, it'll be more, more effective in, in, in the planning going forward. When was the last time we did a 5, 10, or a 20-year master plan or study, if ever?
To my knowledge, a complete master plan has never been conducted within the city.
Okay. And then, will this include any, I know it ties in with the city of Tampa and, and our wastewater.
That's correct.
Will this have, will the, the review that they're doing on that connectivity, will this have any investigation into the accuracy of our, of our transmitting valves?
Absolutely. We will, as part of this process, we will be engaging the city of Tampa because they are the receiving agent for our wastewater. So it's important that they are on board with this plan. They understand what we're doing. They evaluate it. They, they look at our long-term 20-year plan. What's our ultimate build-out? What are we potentially looking to ultimately send down to the wastewater, the Howard F. Kern wastewater treatment plant, so that they can plan for that themselves? So they will be part of this discussionary process, absolutely.
And how will we handle the cost overruns?
Cost overruns for the plan.
The plan. Is there, is it going to come back to us for approval for this? Or is there, is there a leeway that you guys have?
The cost overruns would be, I would have to bring it back to council because we did not actually have the contingency. Is that what you're asking about?
Well, there were, there were commentary in there that they're planning on using existing city drawings and maps and so. If that's not there, they're going to have to build that in. And at this point, with not having one prior that we, anybody knows about, there, to me, there's a potential for overruns that could occur. And I would just, I don't necessarily think it should come back to us unless whatever the procurement rules are, but at least know about it.
Right. So the amount that I've indicated is, is the maximum amount allotted. If there were significant overruns or there were issues associated with the project, I think it's something we would have to readdress with council.
Last question is, in the financial sustainability section, they talk about using the Burton model. We don't use the Burton model. Is that, or the Burton Associates model, is that something that, I don't know, how are we going to populate that, that we don't use that? Is, is that going to be an issue in the presentation?
I don't think it's the same thing.
I, I don't know that it really is going to play any part in this. If there was mention to it, I don't know that we should be mentioning the Burton model. This is a wastewater master plan that we have never done before.
It's in the documents. That's the only reason I bring it up.
And it probably shouldn't be there. That's probably an oversight on my part. This resolution is for it not to exceed amount, as well, to answer your other question. We don't anticipate this exceeding this cost. They were very specific in their, their activities and a description in their task as far as a dollar amount. We will hold them to that cost. They're well aware of the, the drawings that we do have, and we'll certainly help them by sharing that information with them, obviously. So I, I think it's a, it's a good fit, and certainly one of those things that we should have, not something that we set on the shelf, but something that we utilize in the future to build our capital program. So, and we don't, you know, we, we've been doing this kind of nilly-willy, if you would. We know that SA needs work, and we've been doing it as, as we go along. It would certainly be nice to have a plan and a schedule that we're approaching and addressing all of our wastewater needs.
Well, I know. I've seen a lot of activity coming from your department and so forth the last couple of years. That's far better than what I've seen in recent, recent history. So I move to approve the agreement.
And just, I would ask if there's any other questions for council?
No, I just have a comment. We paid for the Burton study a couple of years ago, so it probably is not the worst thing to look at work that's already been done. I, I don't, I don't know what the Burton model looks like. I have not looked at it myself. But, you know, it's something we, we've already paid for it, so I wouldn't say absolutely don't look at it. I mean, it, it's here. It belongs to us, so, you know.
Keep it going, but I don't know it's been used in a couple of three years, but I don't know that we need to spend additional funding on it.
I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's something we already have in place, and I'm just saying.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, council? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, the public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1477, providing for the registration, maintenance, and security of abandoned properties is now open. Code Compliance Director Tom Barone will provide a brief explanation. Mr. Barone.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. Tom Barone, Code Compliance Director. This is the second reading of ordinance 1477, providing the registration, maintenance, and security requirements of abandoned properties, which will protect the values and the assistance of law enforcement with respect to trespassing and other criminal activity. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
We do have members of the public wishing to speak on this item. I would call up Jack Ritter.
Jack Ritter, 227 Willowick Avenue, Temple Terrace, resident 73 years. I approve of this, but I think that the fee to register is way too low. I can compare that with the golf course, or the golf cart fee of $10. There's nobody here that monitors. Nobody cares. It's just a very minuscule thing. But this is something that's going to affect our property values, and we need to make this thing pay for itself. This is going to be a heck of a burden on these guys in code enforcement, both going out and looking at the properties, keeping the records, and making sure they're up to date. So we need to amend the cost to register. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, council comments, questions? Councilman Donahue.
I, I do have a couple of questions. So there's a house in my neighborhood that is empty. It has a for-sale sign in front of it.
That's not, that's not considered abandoned property.
Okay, so it's, it has, it has something that says this is moving forward, right? So it's, let's say it stays for sale for two or three years.
Okay.
At what point do you say, look?
Well, if there's somebody that's unauthorized, that belongs inside, you know, that's living inside that property, then we would, we would get involved then. But at the time, the property's just for sale, and the market's either, you know, not a good market, whatever, we'll just monitor that property.
Okay, so you're just going to monitor, like you would in your daily patrols?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. I, I also noticed the $10 fee, but I, I didn't have a problem with the fee. I, I think I had the problem with the second year, and the third year, and the fourth year. That, to me, seems like that would be the hard thing to monitor.
Right.
So...
The $10 fee is, once we come across a property, that fee is $10 yearly fee.
Right.
And then, then another $10, yes. So it is time-consuming. But we just, we'd just like to get this off the ground and running.
Yeah.
And then we could always make adjustments when, when needed.
Yeah, I, I don't want it to be a problem for people to register.
Yeah.
So, okay. Thank you.
Councilman Ross.
Well, I too had questions about the fee, but we amended this right before the last meeting. And the language in the amended... I've got the microphone on. It's not working?
I can hear you, I can hear you now.
Is it working now? Okay.
Yes.
I too had concerns about the $10 fee, and we amended the language right before the first reading so that it's, it says $10, an annual registration fee of $10, but we added or such other amount established by the city of Temple Terrace so that that amount could be adjusted, because I think it's too low, too. But that enables the city administration to amend that fee without coming back before us and changing the ordinance. Isn't that correct?
That's, that's correct.
I think it's too low also. I think it's too low also.
Any other questions? The public hearing is now closed. Would ask the clerk to read the title of ordinance 1477.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Chapter 8, Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances by enacting a new Article 7 entitled Abandoned Rail Properties, Section 8-169 through Section 8-177, establishing an abandoned rail property registration system within the incorporated areas of Temple Terrace, providing for findings, purpose, and intent, providing for definitions, providing for registration of abandoned properties, providing maintenance requirements, providing for security requirements, providing for inspections, providing for enforcement and penalties, providing for a trespass affidavit, providing for exemptions, providing for the repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing ineffective date.
Would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1477?
I move to approve, and I have a question.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
So according to Mr. Ross, the reading we have here tonight is not accurate, but this is not in the ordinance, it's in the backup material. Well, you said it was amended, and I don't think it's been amended here. In the copy I have, it doesn't have the language that you just used about the fee, unless I'm looking in the wrong place. Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking in the wrong paragraph. Okay, well, I'll stand by my motion.
Any other discussion, council? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the nay sign? Thank you, motion carries. Item 8D, a first public hearing and reading of ordinance 1471 approving the voluntary annexation of 8701 Elmdale Place, Annexation Number 18-05. The public hearing is now open. City Planner Mary Ann Abrahamson will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I represent Annex 1805, the voluntary annexation for 8701 Elmdale Place. This is the first public hearing and reading. The owner and applicants are Russell Patterson and Candy Gale. This property is located on the southeast corner of Elmdale and Davis Road. Again, the request is to annex one parcel into the city from the county, and it's approximately .27 acres. The current future land use is R6 in the county, the proposed is R9 in the City of Temple Terrace. The existing zoning in the county is residential, single-family, conventional 6 in Hillsborough County, and the proposed is R7, or single-family residential 7 in the city. For the 2018 tax collector, the assessed value on this property is $139,000 approximately, with an ad valorem value of approximately $1,800. The city's Development Review Committee, DRC, found no objection to the effective level of service provisions from this annexation. Staff recommends that council approve ordinance 1471 for the voluntary annexation of 8701 Elmdale Place, and April 2nd is the second public hearing and reading for this item.
Are there members of the public wishing to address council on this item? I see two first gentlemen, and as you come forward, if you would state your name and your city of residence. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I live on, off of Davis Road also, on the next block over, West Laneway Drive. I've been there for 40 years.
And your name, sir?
My concern is, my name is Ralph Giordano.
Thank you, sir.
My concern is annexation of such a small piece of property into the city. I would think that the city would be more interested in other, larger tracts of land in the Temple Terrace Reserve area, which is what that area is designated. Our concern is that most of us are quite happy as county residents, not that we don't want to join Temple Terrace, but everyone there has been there for years and years, and we're quite comfortable with it. So when the signs went up, the public was quite concerned that only one lot, and it's like, is this going to be a backdoor method to get the neighborhoods along there to have to go along type thing? So we realize that city services are not available for sewer work, and I believe that there is a cost to be borne by anyone that wants to hook up to the main line which runs down Davis Road, if I have that correct. So our concern is like, well, now they're not going to just hook this one house up for sewer service, you know, where's the cost-effectiveness in this? But moreover, it's that we don't want to be annexed by a backdoor method that someone could want to use, not that there's any kind of a conspiracy out there or anything. It's just, you know, everybody's been there forever going, oh geez, you know, we've had annexation tries before, and we've said thank you very much, but no thank you, and we're all quite happy there. So that was my concern. Is this a concern? Should I be concerned?
Thank you, sir.
Jackie Hayes, 8717 Elmdale in Tampa, and as with Ralph, I'm in the same neighborhood. I live down the street on Elmdale. And I'm concerned as well. What does it mean for the rest of the neighborhood, the rest of the two or three blocks around us regarding the one lot being annexed from our area into Temple Terrace? Is that's what's happening, correct? Can anyone answer that question, or is it just?
So to respond, we received this application from the property owners. We did not go out and seek this property to be annexed into the city. The property does meet the statutory requirements for annexation, so it is therefore eligible. That does not mean that we are making efforts at this time to pursue other properties in the neighborhood. However, if the neighbor next door were to request annexation, they would also meet the statutory requirements, because then they'd be adjacent to city property. As far as the sewer, that's where there is, this property will remain on septic at this time because there's no gravity lift station there, is my understanding, that is close enough for this property to connect to. If it was a commercial property, that'd be a different story. If it's one single-family residential property, they can remain on septic at this time until the infrastructure is in place for them to connect to sewer. Does that answer the question?
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Councilman Ross.
Ms. Abrahamson, I had some questions along the same lines. Along the same lines. I'm in favor of strategic annexation, even when it involves one parcel at a time, like what we're doing with 301 Industrial Park. Sometimes that comes in one parcel at a time, but I know what the goal is. And the north side of Fowler, that usually comes in one parcel at a time also, but I know what we're trying to do is get the whole north shoulder of Fowler Avenue, so it makes sense. I don't know, I don't know that anybody does. I don't know what our strategic goals are out here. So therefore, I had concerns also about one house in a neighborhood and what the ramifications of that are, and so I guess my question for you at the end of all this, there's a question, is how does this work for city staff? Because I'm not, this is not your fault. I mean, I think if anybody has failed to give proper guidance, it's probably the council. So my question for you is, what would be the basis for your recommendation of approval of this type of property, and what would be some of the grounds for you to recommend disapproval of other, I don't know if you're prepared to answer that, or if I set you up, but...
Well, I will say the basis for my current recommendation is, when this was all routed to DRC, the various departments in the city were able to respond with any concerns that they had, and I did not receive any major concerns from, I will say, from public works and the maintenance side or utilities. Of course, there was some discussion about sewer or septic, and the city engineer stated they don't have to connect to the sewer line because it is not close enough for them to connect to at this time, they can remain on septic. So taking the comments from the DRC staff, members that are included in DRC into consideration, also that this meets the statutory requirements for annexation, so I don't necessarily have a basis to deny it based on those things, that was how I came to this, the conclusion of recommending approval.
The public hearing is now closed. If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading. If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on April 2, 2019. Is there a motion? She has to read it. Oh, apologies. City clerk.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation of one parcel of certain rail property totaling 0.27 plus-minus acres lying within the unincorporated area of Hillsborough County, and located in the southeast corner of Elmdale Place and Davis Road, with an address of 8701 Elmdale Place, legally described in Exhibit A attached hereto and made a part here of redefining the corporate boundaries of the city to include the annexed area, providing severability, ineffective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the first public hearing and reading of ordinance 1471, approving the voluntary annexation of 8701 Elmdale Place.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Further discussion, council? Councilman Ross.
I can't support this, and not because I don't like the people in Elmdale, I'm sure they're fine people, and I'm sure that they're a nice home, but this is, I'm in favor of strategic annexation, where we know what our goal is, where we're trying to go. The 301 Industrial Park, we know what we're trying to do there. The north shoulder of Fowler Avenue, we know what we're trying to do there, but we have had no discussion, at least not during my term, about what our goals are along Davis Road. And unless we have a goal of annexing this neighborhood or a community, or at least hoping that the rest of them will annex, I don't think sporadic and one house out of a whole neighborhood annexation is a smart strategy for the city. I think we need to have our workshop in May and figure out where we want our city to grow before we just go. Now, I know it's minor, and the sky's not going to fall if we annex this house, but the 911 routing for one house in the neighborhood is different. The garbage trucks got to turn down Elmdale to pick up garbage at one house. There's one house in the neighborhood that's subject to an entirely different set of code requirements than unincorporated. Code enforcement's different. The building requirements are different. If they want to put a fence up, if they want to redo their kitchen, they've got to go to a different, everything is different for one house. I don't think that makes any sense. I think that's how we get these crazy borders that we have, and I know when I was in law enforcement, that's the kind of stuff that drove deputies crazy. Is it on the right side of the yellow line, or is it on the left side of the yellow line? And then you've got, at best-case scenario, you've got police from two different jurisdictions showing up. Worst-case scenario is nobody shows up because they think the other people are showing up. So I just can't support this until we have our workshop and figure out what our annexation goals are.
Any additional discussion, Councilman Donahue?
For all we know, he wants to come in so he can go to the Family Rec Center. I don't, or the, whatever. This, as she said, no one raised a flag. And last year, we annexed one house at a time up in the north section by River Hills Drive for someone to build a house on. It was empty property, and they wanted to build a house. So, I mean, that almost did the same thing. Considering that he has every right and passed all the bells and whistles, I don't know how we can tell him no. I realize it's our right to say no, but, you know, one house at a time has been a strategy. Now, obviously, the neighbors have said they're not interested, okay? But houses sell, and that is, that is, could be a strategy. It could take 10 years, 20 years for it to move beyond Davis Road, but, I don't know, I feel awkward in not, just because this is a one, single house. If this was a business, we probably wouldn't even bat an eye, because he would be bringing to us a higher tax roll than a house is. So I feel that many times there are things that we just don't have a good reason to say no to. We've had to, we've faced this before. Legally, he qualifies, and to me, that when you qualify legally, how do I say no? I mean, I don't, I haven't, that's my point, is I don't see how we can say no, so I will be supporting this, my motion.
Thank you. Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I tend to agree with Councilman Ross on this. The annexation, or the individual annexations that occurred north of Fowler, out by the industrial park, there's stuff all around it, okay? And this is just kind of sort of filling in the blanks on some of the things that have already been there. Going, as you say, to that one corner on Elmdale, yeah, that to me could present a problem. I mean, now the trash trucks are going to come off of Navajo, then they're going to do one little, I don't know even how they're going to make the turn, in and out of Elmdale just to take care of that one piece of property. I'm in favor of annexation, in favor of annexation wherever we can get it. Voluntary makes it even sweeter. I know it makes the neighbors a little bit nervous, but it is what it is on that respect. I don't fault staff because it comes in and says, hey, these are the guidelines, your hands are tied, you have a certain set of criteria to follow. If it meets that criteria, you, staff passes it on to council. It's up to us to take that next step forward. I don't know that I can agree with this, you know, go along with this motion at this point, because it presents those kinds of problems. It presents, it's a little bit out of the realm, and we have not, as Andy said, as Councilman Ross said, we have not established what our ongoing criteria is going to be. So I, at this moment, I don't know that I can support the motion.
Thank you, Councilman Schisler. Councilman Chambers.
Question for the city manager. If there was a problem with routing of garbage trucks, would that show up in the DRC review? And there was no objection?
Yes, it would. It goes, the municipal box division is part of that DRC review.
Okay, so all these things that we're bringing up have been looked at by staff, and there were no objections?
That's correct.
Okay. And again, I'm in favor of this annexation. However, I would also kind of be in favor of holding this off until our annexation workshop that we're going to have in a month or so. But I'm prepared to vote yes tonight if we go forward.
Councilman Ross.
I just wanted to say, no matter what happens here, I mean, it's not personal, I'm not going to fall on the sword over one house coming into the city. I'm sure these are nice people, but this makes no sense. And just because the statutes that guide the city staff in making their decision to recommend approval or disapproval, those statutes, there's no legal right for these people to annex into Temple Terrace if they don't have a specific problem. We are allowed to say, this makes no sense. They don't have a constitutional right to annex just because they live next to the city, and we're well within our legal rights to say no, or at least no now, let us, you know, in May, if we meet and we decide, you know what, we'd like to go all the way out to Morris Bridge Road, well, then so be it, then hear it then. But we don't know that. I don't know that at the end of our workshop in May, that we're going to want to go east of Davis any, I don't know, because I haven't heard from, we haven't had that discussion. I just think to annex one house, and if it were a business, it would be different? Not in my mind. If it made no sense, if it was commercial, it'd still make no sense. I would be against it then too. So anyway, whatever you want to do.
City Manager Stevenson.
If I may just say a couple of things here. One, this is a voluntary annexation. We have not forced annexation. These people have petitioned us to come into the city. I don't know the particular reason for that. I don't know if Ms. Abrahamson knows the particular reason, but obviously are caring to come into the city. To answer your other question, we are in fact, right now, have city property that is east of Davis Road, currently. So it's not as if we're venturing out. We had, we had a petition come in to us. I think we're obligated to hear that petition. If you care not to annex it, then you need to let me know. But, you know, we've been leapfrogging annexations for a long time. That's typically how we've done these. I think that you guys have given us direction that we need to annex, we need to grow. This is certainly a start to that. I mean, if we tell these people no now, you have just now, you have put the coffin, the nail in the coffin with the rest of the neighborhood, we'll never be able to get people in. nail in the coffin with the rest of the neighborhood, we'll never be able to get people in. So, just keep that in mind, please.
I worry about, too.
I mean, you know, we've been taking a single-family lot at a time, anywhere we can get it that meets the state statute, where they are, in fact, they're not obligated to come in, but they certainly, when they petition us for voluntary annexation, we take them. So...
Thank you. That's my sentiment, exactly.
You can certainly tell us what you would like us to do with the...
Thank you, City Manager. Any further discussion, Council? We have a motion, we have a second.
We have a public comment.
We've had a public comment.
Yeah.
When the public came up and spoke? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the nay sign?
Nay.
Motion passes, three to two. Thank you. Next, a first public hearing and reading of ordinance 1475 approving comprehensive plan amendment of 8701 Elmdale Place, CPA 18-05. The public hearing is now open. Mark Hudson of the Hillsborough County Planning Commission will explain.
Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. This is a related plan amendment to the voluntary annexation you just heard. If I could get the PowerPoint up. Thank you. This plan amendment is designated TT CPA 1805. This shows you the location of the four plan amendments that we are processing for the city of Temple Terrace this cycle. The one that we just spoke of in the voluntary annexation, and that is part of this land use change, is TT CPA 1805. You can see it's located in the eastern portion of the city with the yellow star. I would also like to note that the most northernly plan amendment, PC, excuse me, TT CPA 1808, has asked for a continuance for 30 days, so we expect to bring that map amendment to you for your consideration in the month of May. The other three plan amendments that are shown on this locator map, we will present to you this evening. This shows you the aerial photograph of the voluntary annexation in the neighborhood along Elmdale Place that is being considered for this future land use change. Again, it is a public-initiated plan amendment. It is, as we already spoke of, it's a voluntary annexation. It's considered small scale, it's less than 10 acres, at only 0.27 acres. Its current land use is Hillsborough County Residential 6. Staff has identified the most comparable land use designation in the city to that existing land use, which is Temple Terrace Residential 9. This shows you the site or the home in question that is requested voluntary annexation. And this gives you a little idea of the character of the neighborhood, a look along Elmdale Place. And this is a shot of North Davis Road. This shows you the future land use map as it stands today. You can see the bright yellow color of the Hillsborough County Residential 6 and the more tan color of the Temple Terrace Residential 9. If the map amendment was approved by Temple Terrace City Council, the map would change that and would match the residential 9 that you see on the other side of North Davis What are the maximum potential density and intensity ramifications if this was approved? Existing, based on the calculations, it would allow one dwelling unit per acre, one dwelling unit on this lot. Theoretically, once this was approved, it could allow two. However, the staff is also processing a rezoning, which will be discussed in a moment, which will continue to allow only that single-family home on that lot. Our staff did review this next to the Temple Terrace Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan. We noted several policies that we felt this was consistent with, particularly those dealing with neighborhood conservation and annexations. We also feel that the land use that's being proposed is comparable and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And with that, our staff would recommend that after receiving public input, approve an ordinance adopting Temple Terrace CPA 1805 on April 2nd at your next hearing, consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. I would first ask if there are members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, is the applicant in attendance this evening? Public hearing is now closed. If the city clerk would please read the title of ordinance 1475.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for one parcel of land located in the southeast corner of Elmdale Place and Davis Road with an addressable location of 8701 Elmdale Place consistent with approximately 0.27 plus minus acres by changing the future land use designation on said property from Residential 6, Hillsborough County, to Residential 9 in Temple Terrace for CPA 1805, providing for amendment to the official future land use map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Thank you. If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading. If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on April 2, 2019. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the first public hearing and reading of ordinance 1475 approving the comprehensive plan amendment of 8701 Elmdale Place.
Thank you, Councilwoman Downey. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Chambers. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Item 8F, a first public hearing and reading of ordinance 1476 approving the zoning reclassification of 8701 Elmdale Place, RZP 18-07. The public hearing is now open. City Clerk, please swear in all persons who will be testifying.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the truth, so help you God?
City Council members, please make disclosure of oral and written ex parte communications with applicant or citizens regarding this matter.
I've had no discussion.
I've had none?
None.
None.
Thank you, City Planner, Mary Ann. Abrahamson will explain.
Good evening, and this is the rezoning application for the annexation property that we just spoke of, 8701 Elmdale Place. This is RZP 1807. This zoning request is to change the zoning from residential single-family conventional 6 in the county to residential, or, excuse me, single-family residential 7 in the city. As mentioned, there is one existing single-family home on this property, and the property owners have stated that they do not intend to modify the existing use. When staff looked at the zoning and the setbacks of the current property, we determined that R7 would be the most compatible for this, for this property here, based on the setbacks that you see before you and the R7 regulations in our land development code. The Planning Commission has found the request consistent with a comprehensive plan. The city's DRC committee has no objection, and staff recommends that council approve ordinance 1476 for rezoning classification of 8701 Elmdale Place. Second public hearing and reading is on April 2nd.
Thank you. Are there members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Public hearing is now closed. If the city clerk would please read the title of ordinance 1476.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning 0.27 plus minus acres of land located at the southeast corner of Elmdale Place and Davis Road with an address of 8701 Elmdale Place from zoning classification residential single-family conventional 6 in Hillsborough County to single-family residential 7 in Temple Terrace for RZP 18-07, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading. If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on April 2, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a first public hearing and reading of ordinance 1480 approving the comprehensive plan amendment for 8901 Mason Drive, CPA 18-07. The public hearing is now open. Mark Hudson of the Hillsborough County Planning Commission will explain.
Again, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. This is related to another voluntary annexation in an industrial area of the city of Plant City. Again, it's Temple Terrace CPA 1808. This shows you the location of this plan amendment. Again, it's in the southeastern portion of the community. This shows you the plan amendment site and location, just south of Mason Drive, just east of Professional Place. If you recall, some months ago, we presented a plan amendment to you that was just to the west of this site across Professional Place. That was TT CPA 1804, and it was a similar request to the one that we had before us this evening. Again, this is a privately initiated plan amendment related to voluntary annexation. Again, it's small scale as standing at only 2.21 acres. Currently has a Hillsborough County Community Unit Mixed Use 12, and the request is to go to Temple Terrace Industrial. A few photos of the site in question. This is the vacant parcel that is requesting to come into the city and requesting this land use designation, and you can see some of the industrial uses to the north. This shows you some of the industrial activity at the intersection of Professional Place and Mason Drive. And again, this shows you some more of the industrial activity in this location. This is the future land use map as it stands today. The mauve color represents the Hillsborough County Community Unit, Community Mixed Use 12, and the gray color is Temple Terrace Industrial. And if this plan amendment was approved on April 2nd by the city council, this is how the map would be revised to reflect the industrial characteristics of that area within Temple Terrace. With the ramifications of this was approved, currently, there actually is some residential development potential on the site, even though we would feel it would be inappropriate in this location. It also allows 48,000 square feet of either commercial or industrial uses at a .5 FAR. Those square footage entitlements would be increased based on the land use designation of industrial in Temple Terrace, would go up to about 62,000 square feet with a .65 We did review this in comparison to the Temple Terrace Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan. In particular, we noted that we felt this was consistent with policies dealing with industrial neighborhoods, economic development areas, annexations within that plan. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission Board on March 11th, and they did recommend that, find this consistent with your plan and recommended approval. And our recommendation to staff is that after receiving public input, to approve an ordinance adopting TT CPA 1807 on April 2nd, 2019, consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. I'd ask if there are any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. If the city clerk would please read the title of ordinance 1480.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for one parcel of land located in the southeast corner of Mason Drive and Professional Place with an addressable location of 8901 Mason Drive consistent with approximately 2.21 plus minus acres by changing the future land use designation on said property from Community Mixed Use 12, Hillsborough County, to industrial in Temple Terrace for CPA 1807, providing for amendment to the official future land use map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading. If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on April 2, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, the first public hearing and reading to adopt ordinance 1481 approving the zoning reclassification of 8901 Mason Drive, RZP 18-09. The public hearing is now open. City Clerk, if you would please swear in all persons who will be testifying.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the truth, so help you God.
And city council members, please make disclosures of oral and written ex parte communications with applicant and/or citizens regarding this matter.
I've had none.
I've had none?
None.
None.
City Planner, Mary Ann Abrahamson will explain.
Good evening again. This is the first public hearing and reading for a zoning reclassification application for 8901 Mason Drive. The owner and applicant is Henry Vigria, VC Properties LLC. This site, as mentioned, is located just east of the recently annexed Ajax property. This is on the southeast corner of Mason and Professional, Mason Drive and Professional Place, excuse me, in the US 301 industrial area. The existing zoning is manufacturing in the county. The proposed is light industrial in the city, holding to the characteristic of the 301 industrial area. Currently, it's approximately 2.21 acres, which is currently vacant. The Planning Commission found the request consistent with our comprehensive plan. The city's Development Review Committee has no objection, and staff recommends that council approve ordinance 1476 for zoning reclassification 8701, oh, excuse me, 8901 Mason Drive. The second public hearing and reading is April 2nd.
Thank you. Are there members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Public hearing is now closed. If the city clerk would read the title of ordinance 1481.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning 2.21 plus minus acres of land located on the southeast corner of Mason Drive and Professional Place with an address of 8901 Mason Drive from zoning classification manufacturing Hillsborough County to light industrial Temple Terrace for RZP 1809, providing for the amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading. If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on April 2, 2019. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the first public hearing and ordinance, reading of ordinance 1478 approving the comprehensive plan amendment. I think I'm on the wrong one.
Item 8H.
I move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Item 8I, a first public hearing and reading of ordinance 1478 approving the comprehensive plan amendment for 7118 East Fowler Avenue, CPA 18-06. Public hearing is now open. Mark Hudson of the Hillsborough County Planning Commission will explain.
Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. Interesting enough, this is, this last plan amendment we are presenting to you tonight. The first was residential, the second was industrial, and this one is commercial. So, we've covered the gamut of different types of land uses. If I could have the PowerPoint. Again, this is TT CPA 1806. Again, it's related to a voluntary annexation. It's located up on the north face of Fowler Avenue, as you can see by this locator map and the yellow star. This is a little bit more of a zoom in of the actual site in question. You can see it's to the west of River Hills Drive and to the east of North Drive on north face of East Fowler Avenue. Again, this is privately initiated. It's related to a voluntary annexation. Again, small scale, being under 10 acres, actually just over half an acre. Its current land use is Hillsborough County Residential 6, and the request of the applicant is Temple Terrace Commercial. This is a picture of the site. Currently, it is an automotive repair facility that is currently in operation, and you can see those activities taking place in this photograph. And this shows you the, if you're standing on the site in question looking across Fowler Avenue, you can see some of the residential uses over the six lanes of Fowler Avenue and the fence that is on that side of the roadway. This is the future land use map as it stands today. Again, as in the past plan amendments, the bright yellow is the residential 6 and unincorporated Hillsborough County. Based on their locational criteria, it does allow commercial uses at this location. And if the map amendment was approved by the city council, it would change to the Temple Terrace Commercial over the red color that you see on this map. We did look at the potential impacts. The potential residential development could increase slightly from three dwelling units to five dwelling units, but the particular change is related to the potential for commercial development. Right now, it's about 6,300 square feet of commercial office uses, and this would double to a .5 FAR at about 12,000 square feet. We did review this based on your Temple Terrace Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan. In particular, we noted policies dealing with neighborhood conservation, the multimodal corridor, which Fowler Avenue is, and commercial development, and also with non-residential development, those compatibility issues with the residents that surround it to the north, and growth management policies in your plan, and we felt it was consistent, and this recommended approval of this request. This was presented to the Planning Commission on March 11th, and they did find it consistent with your plan, and asked staff to forward that to you for your consideration. And our staff recommendation is that after receiving public input, approve an ordinance adopting TT CPA 1806 on April 2nd, 2019, consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive... goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Twenty Forty Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Are there members of, are there members of the community that would like to address council on this item? Yes, sir. As you come forward, if you'll state your name and city of residence.
My name is Jack Townsend, Temple Terrace, Florida. I know a young couple that just bought the house behind this property. And just because I know them so well, I'd like to know what happens to having bright lights there? Who directs that? What can turn off the lights for this family that just got there with their five and three year old? Is there a thing that that's going to come out of this? Our city ordinances, are they going to cover how they sign this place and how bright the lights are and how tall they build a twelve thousand square foot commercial building, if they ever do, in the backyard of this nice young couple that just showed up here in our community, who came back home after serving a number of years in the armed services? I'd like to know all that, if somebody can tell me. I don't think it stops what we're about to do, because it's a commercial move where you're picking up a cool property that Elmer had in the county for many, many years with his auto clinic, and now it's becoming a city of Temple Terrace property. But I think that's a real question for the neighbor right behind them. I mean, right behind them. Because I was there, their house opening, housewarming, and they had a great party. And as I was standing there looking at it, I'm like, wow, this house, this house is right behind Elmer's. How's that all going to work out? If this all passes? And I think that's important. People are speaking about how picking up north of Fowler might be, and we've been to some meetings about that. But those neighbors up there want to know that. So if anybody can speak to that, I'd sure like to hear it, and I think others would too.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
Thank you.
Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. I would say that usually details of that nature, what you're dealing with, controlling lighting, signage, buffering, are usually handled in the zoning, and I believe that's the next item on your agenda. So perhaps staff can illuminate the council on it during that actual phase of the review.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. And I would ask if the applicant is in attendance this evening? At this point, we will close the public hearing. If the city clerk would please read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Imagine Twenty Forty Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for one parcel of land located north of Fowler Avenue, east of North Drive, and west of River Hills Drive with an addressable location of seven one one eight Fowler Avenue, consistent with approximately zero point five eight plus minus acres by changing the future land use designation on said property from commercial neighborhood in Hillsborough County to commercial Temple Terrace for CPA eighteen oh six, providing for amendment to the official future land use map of the city, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading? If approved, the ordinance will appear for the second reading and public hearing on April two, twenty nineteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, council? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you, motion carries. Item eight J, a first public hearing and reading of ordinance fourteen seventy-nine approving the zoning reclassification of seventy-one eighteen East Fowler Avenue R Z P eighteen dash zero eight. Public hearing is now open. City clerk, please swear in all persons who will testify.
Do you swear to tell the truth, hold the truth, and not the truth, so I'll be gone?
And if council members would please disclose any oral or written ex parte communications with applicant or citizens regarding this matter?
I've had none.
I've had none?
None.
I've had none.
City planner Andrea College will explain.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Tonight, I'm presenting the zoning reclassification number eighteen oh eight. It's the first public hearing for the property located as seven one one eight East Fowler Avenue. The zoning request is to move from commercial neighborhood in the county to commercial general in the city. The property contains approximately five point five eight acres. This is the property looking north from Fowler Avenue. It consists of an auto repair shop and a single-family home that is utilized as the business office. In order for the existing auto repair business to remain and continue to exist, this rezoning requires two waivers. The first item is to waive a separate review of the conditional use. Auto repair are conditional on commercial general zoning. That would grant the conditional use concurrently with the rezoning. And the second item is to grant a waiver to the minimum required lot for auto repair shops. The code for conditional uses requires a minimum of three acres of land for an auto repair shop. The property, as has been annexed from the county, is point five eight acres. So a waiver from those two items would be needed alongside with the rezoning. If those are granted, there would be conditions of approval. So there's two levels of these conditions. The gentleman that spoke earlier had some concerns with lighting. We would require that the applicant, within one year, meet landscaping buffering requirements. They would also have to shield outdoor car storage areas from view. They would have to bring the signage into compliance, and they would have to address the lighting and glare spillover that would be happening. So now that we know that there is in fact that, we will make sure we address those items in more detail with the applicant as well. So they do have a year to come into compliance to do that, but we'll try to move forward with that quickly since there is an issue. This second set of conditions would be that upon site redevelopment or substantial expansion, that the property would be brought at that point into full compliance with the code. The only issue would be if he's going to keep an auto repair shop, then the waiver to allow him to have this smaller size would remain, but he would have to meet all the other standards for parking, circulation, access. So all of that would still would come into full compliance at that time. The Planning Commission found the request consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the city development review committee had no objections. Staff recommends council approve the ordinance fourteen seventy-nine to adopt the zoning reclassification application R Z P eighteen oh eight with condition and waivers provided therein, and the second hearing is scheduled for April second.
Thank you, Ms. College. Are there members of the public wishing to address council on this item? Mr. Townsend.
Jack Townsend, Temple Terrace, Florida. My questions, I think, are answered inside of the conditions. But I'm not reading the conditions, and you, as a group, are, and you know how they read. My question would be, are the conditions, as you see them, and as you understand staff to work with them, enough and comfortable enough that you would feel like your thirty year old son or daughter could come live with their three kids right behind that place? And I in no way want to stop this from happening. And it's my concern, I was never asked to come up here and talk for that couple, but I just happened to be in their backyard a week ago, looking at what was happening, and then happened to be here tonight, seeing this happen. So as a question, are they enough conditions? They probably are. I don't know, but that's my question, and would ask that if there's a little more that can be done, a little tweaking that can be done, that would be wonderful. And if that all comes from staff working with them, that's great, too. Just hope that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, I'd ask if the applicant is in attendance this evening? Public hearing is now closed, and there is one question from Mr. Ross that he'd like to pose to Ms. College before we move forward.
I do have a question, Mrs. College. Just to make sure that I understand this correctly, had this property not annexed, it would have been able to do business like it has for years with light and noise and all, just like normal? The county would have not required anything from them. Because it annexed, we've placed these conditions of approval that they have to do within a year to include landscape buffer, light mitigation, shielding the cars, those types of, those things would have never had to have been done at all had they not annexed. Is that correct?
That is correct. Coming into the city makes them comply with this, not coming into the city allows them to continue doing what they're doing.
So in terms of the neighbor, they're far better off that they've annexed, because if they would have stayed into the county, nothing would have had to have been approved.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. College. If the city clerk would please read the title of the ordinance.
If I, if I can ask Ms. College just a quick question here. Have these conditions been discussed with the, with the owners of the property?
Yes, sir. We have talked to the, yes.
They're in agreement with these conditions?
Yes.
Thank you. If the city clerk would please read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning zero point five eight plus minus acres of land located north of Fowler Avenue, east of North Drive, and west of River Hills Drive with an address of seven one one eight East Fowler Avenue from zoning classification residential commercial neighborhood in Hillsborough County to commercial neighborhood in Temple Terrace for R Z P eighteen oh eight, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Thank you. If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading? If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on April two, twenty nineteen. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the nay sign? Thank you, motion carries. Council, is there any carryover business from our previous meeting? New business? Councilman Schisler.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been a, it's been a rough week in other parts of the world. And last week, in fact, the day after the horrific New Zealand mosque attack, I received a request by a community leader to reach out to us to, with concerns of local potential copycat attacks or influences within our city. And there was, there was deep concern within the community, and they were concerned about, you know, what else could, what could, what could occur here? I want to thank the chief and the city manager, because to my knowledge, when they, when they were made aware of this concern, they reacted, and hopefully, the fears and, and the immediacy of their efforts helped to quell any of the fears of our Muslim neighbors during this deep time of grief and sorrow. So on behalf of council, I want to say thank you for that. Hopefully, the community recognizes the, the efforts that, that were put there. You know, this, this is a horrible tragedy perpetrated by some real evil people, and I'm sure that nobody ever thought it could happen in their, in, in Christchurch. And I think that it's important that we stand with our Muslim neighbors, our, all of our neighbors, and do everything that we can prevent that, that this ever happens in our city. And if everybody does that, maybe someday this won't ever occur again. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you, councilman. Is there any additional new business to come before council this evening? Councilman Ross.
Minor board report from the Riverwatch Task Force. The river, the Water Goat Project is moving forward. I expect to have a proposed date to put this on the river, and it would probably be a request for council members and mayor to come if we can do a little ceremony of sorts. I don't have that date yet, at least not solidified, but my hope is, I anticipate asking for a few minutes at the next council meeting for the Riverwatch Task Force to unveil that and present it to the, to the whole council. So just an update.
Thank you, councilman. Any other new business to come before us? We will go to our city manager's report. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am pleased to announce that Mr. Hernandez, who is in our audience this evening, was able to make his second payment, and he is current and up to date with that situation that, I know this council allowed him to do something out of the ordinary. I'm sure that he's appreciative, and I'm certainly appreciative that he's followed through with what he said he would do. So that being said, I don't know if he wants to say any words, but he certainly is present this evening. But if, I may just welcome him up if he wants to say some words to council. We, we are, and we certainly appreciate you following through with that, that effort. I will be out of town next week from the twenty-sixth to the twenty-ninth, just for council's knowledge, and we'll be following up with that in Friday's report on council update as far as who will be left in charge. One other item, just to remind everybody, March twenty-fifth, before our next meeting, is a grand opening for the Boys and Girls Club, twenty-fifth to three P M. We would love to see everybody there. This is a, this is a monumental step for the city, to open up this facility for our children. March twenty-fifth, next Monday, three P M. Madam Mayor, I don't have anything else.
Councilman Ross.
I have a question, just a general question, not, not due to what happened tonight, but I know how the General Professional Services Agreement works, that we have relationships with engineering firms that we don't, that prevents us from having to go out on bid for everything, which is really good. How often does that get opened up for other companies to, is that put out to bid to get on that list every so many years? How's that work?
I think it's an annual, annual review that we do, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Tins can address it.
I'll see if I can maintain my train of thought this time. The, the contract's actually for three years. And it is coming due, or it's, it's ending towards the end of this year, calendar year. So we will readvertise for that, and then we will, we will select a given number of firms, much like we did this go around, and then we'll have another three-year contract.
And we have contracts with a few of them, not just one, is that correct?
Right. There are a total of four.
Four?
That are on the, the C C N A, the General Services Contract. We would likely probably mimic that the next go around or something similar.
Okay.
As far as the number of firms. It gives us a little bit of latitude when we're doing different projects to, to look at other, you know, other companies and firms and consultants for that effort, so.
Thank you. Is there any further business to come before council? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.